All right, folks, four minutes after. Let's start calling the meeting to order and start a roll call. The Oregon School Boards Association OSBA Board of Directors Special Meeting on Thursday, July 11, 2024 is called to order at 10:04. A roll call will be taken. Please unmute and say present when your name is read. Lenell, please read the roll call.
Craig Albright. Jeff Crapper. Chris Cronin.
Present.
Jackie Crook.
Present.
Lori Danzuka. Katrina Doughty. Neelam Gupta.
Here, and I also want to let you know I need to leave at 11:30. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Linda Hamilton.
Here.
Chris Howitt.
Here.
Trista Urban.
Here.
Greg Kents.
Present.
Kristy Cocke.
Here.
Steve Lowell.
Here.
Sonia McKenzie. Alonso Oliveras.
Present.
Chrissy Wrights. Clyde Rude.
Here.
Nicole Schott. Emily Smith.
Emily Smith indicated that she will be arriving a little bit later.
Nancy Thomas. Glenn Walker. Don Watson.
Here.
That is 12 present. A quorum is when it reached.
And I'll editorialize this. A quorum is reached like barely. We need 12 to be in a quorum. Is that correct, Lenell?
Yes.
Okay, so a quorum is reached. If anybody needs to leave or to be excused, please let me know. I would love to maintain quorum as we need to make some action at the end of the meeting. I believe the screen here reflects those who are present, but if you see your name in gray or grayed out in the screen and you are here, please unmute and say your name. All right. Well, next item on the agenda is approving the agenda. The president entertains a motion to for unanimous consent to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there a discussion on the motion? To approve the agenda, there seem there is no discussion on the motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any objection? Without objection, passes. Now, next item of the agenda is facilitated conversation and actions related to reviewing executive director hiring process. So I would like to thank you all for sparing some time and as I get ready here to share the slides, can you all see the slideshow? Perfect. I see a thumbs up. I want to really thank you for being here, for our staff, for our members and for the kids. The outline of our conversation today is going to be an overview and background for where we are. That might be repeated information for many or all of you as board members, but really a good recap for all of us and for any members of the public who might be listening into this conversation. An overview of four decisions for this board to consider and the options available for us. And before we go into those four decisions, we'll have an overview of them, but before we get into deliberating on those four decisions, we would like to really reflect and center our conversation around what factors we want to consider as we navigate this conversation. What are the elements that we want to center in this conversation? And then we will discuss each decision through a presentation, explanation of each option, legal considerations from external counsel about each option, a review of the executive committee recommendations, and then follow up with a board deliberation on each decision. At the end of reviewing each of those four decisions, we will discuss, we will recap and review the discussion. And if there is any consensus, what the consensus was, and then we'll entertain motions sought on the four decisions toward the end of this conversation, the end of the hour, not the end of the hour, the end of the meeting. Now, as I've been listening in from fellow board members, superintendents and members across Oregon about what should be centering in this conversation when we hire an executive director? And also from staff, feedback is coming always that you got to center OSBA's mission. And that's why I want to bring OSBA's mission here as it is our most important responsibility to hire an executive director as a board of director. Reflecting on OSBA's mission seems to be appropriate. The Oregon School Boards Association is dedicated to improving student success and education equity through advocacy, leadership and service to Oregon Public School Boards. Now, here's a timeline of where we are. In June 2024, the board appointed Emilie Nishik, the acting executive director since December 2023 as an interim executive director. July 2024, today, the board will need to consider four decisions on how to move forward with the hiring process. A timeline of how we move forward from here will be developed for the hiring of an executive director depending on these decisions that we will be speaking about today. So right now, there are some four decisions that we need to make that will help inform developing what's the timeline looks like. And before we go into those decisions, I want to review with you and remind you that this board have approved in January 19, the executive director hiring process. There are 15 steps that stipulates for the board how to navigate hiring an executive director in case there is a vacancy. The assumption of this process was if you're going into an open search for hiring an executive director. So I just want to put a pin there that there is a process that we have developed and that's maybe used by the board to navigate these decisions. But before we go there, I would like to show you the four decisions for the board to consider and the options available. First, before we delve into each one of them in detail, I'll mention them as a very high level and then we'll go back to them in a minute. At a very high level today, this board will be asked to answer four questions. The first question is, should this board engage in a search process? Or should it consider a direct hire of the interim executive director? The second decision, should we update the executive director job description? Or should we not update the job description at this time? The decision number three that we need to decide on, should we obtain a salary range study? That explains what is the market rate or ranges of executive directors paid? Or should we not do that at this time? The fourth decision. As we navigate the hiring process of an executive director, we could do it in two different ways, a fully public process. That's one way, or allowing for executive session deliberations on confidential applicant process. So either fully public or allowing for executive session deliberation, just similar to how many of you may have engaged in hiring a superintendent. There are two ways to do it. And there are some considerations for each pathway that a legal counsel will share with us. So again, we have four decisions to consider that you see on the screen. We will discuss them in detail. We'll have time to listen from legal counsel from about to the options available and also we'll get an opportunity to ask questions and deliberate. Now let's pause for a minute and ask ourselves, what should we center and consider the factor that's come to our minds when we engage in this process? So that's what I want to pause for a minute and ask you for your thoughts as well about factors for this board to consider as we choose one option over the other. I'll share with you a few things that I have heard from folks and then I'll be asking you to also share your insights and thoughts as well. Again, centering OSBA's mission, making sure that our decisions to hire an executive director and the process that we adopt really centers the students' outcomes, improving student outcomes and supporting our staff through the work that they do fulfilling this mission. Also, some factors recommended to this board from the conversations that we heard and the executive committee also have heard are the following. Strategic needs. Stability. Readiness. And financial impact. Then as we go through each one of them, I'll discuss them in a very quick minute. I would like you to also think about them. Are these what you would like to center? Are there any other factors you prefer that we also center in this conversation? First, strategic needs. What we mean by this is considering which options and hiring decisions that would best address members and staff needs according to the organization's strategic needs. Fortunately, we have identified several very recently through the Caragia Group study findings that we have been presented recently. The other dimension or factor is ensuring stability, considering what's options and timeline that would support stability for the board and the organization's staff and our members' services. The third one is readiness. What options or which options on hiring decisions that would help the organization be ready to serve its members through effective engagement with members during the fall roadshow that we're going to have in October, upcoming conference in November, and most importantly, preparation for the legislative advocacy starting this fall all the way through the 25 legislative session ending June or July 2025. Supporting leadership readiness for OSBA is continue to continue leadership on legislative efforts on public education funding. So readiness to do that work, any options that will help us be ready to do that work. A fourth one, the executive committee deliberated on yesterday and wanted to bring that or two days ago and wanted to bring that to your attention is when we discuss those options, let's make sure that we reflect on the financial impact, considering the fiscal impact of each decision. So these are four, and I want to pause here and ask you through probably a roll call, which parameters or is there any other parameters you would like to consider? So what other parameters would you like to highlight for the board to consider as we navigate this conversation? Is there anything else comes to mind? Or do you want to emphasize any of those? So how about we go one by one and ask Lenell to ask for your name? And to make it easier for you, we I will share with you the roster here so you know which person is going to be before you so you know when it is time to unmute. And if you see your name in gray, welcome and please feel free to raise your hand. So we will see that you're available here and we'll recognize you when your turn comes in.
Chris Cronin.
I have I had input yesterday, so I have nothing further to add. I'm very comfortable with this.
Jackie Crook.
I am in agreement with all four and I think all four are important. I couldn't choose one over the other.
Neelam Gupta.
I don't have anything to add. I think these are really great. Thank you.
Linda Hamilton.
Move on. Thank you. Nothing.
Chris Howitt.
Good morning. I don't think there's anything more that I would add, but probably the number one thing for me is stability with the organization that that is going to be my lens that I'm going to look through when we look at these other considerations.
Mr. Urban.
Yeah, those all look great to me. Thank you.
Greg Kents.
They look fine to me. I don't have any particular favorite.
Kristy Cocke.
I had overall efficiency, but I think that's covered in numbers two, three, and four, and then I also had transparency. Thank you.
Steve Lowell.
I don't have anything to add. Those four are perfect.
Alonso Oliveras.
I don't have anything to add. These all look great. Thank you.
Clyde Rude.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Emily Smith.
Nothing to add. It looks good to me.
Don Watson.
Looks good. Nothing to add. Thanks.
Well, thank you, everybody. Looks like we have a kind of consensus there and thank you for adding transparency, overall efficiency as well. Any second thoughts after you heard from everybody? Raise your hand, please, if you have any second thoughts or additional thoughts. All right, seeing there is no final thoughts. We're going to come back to this list every time we go into one of these decisions. So if something comes to mind, you feel free to add it or say this is the time where we need to maybe emphasize one or the other. It's really good for us to center those as we discuss the different options. Now we're going to talk about each decision by less hearing about which options are available and gets questions answered about legal counsel from legal counsel by to each option. And then we're going to review what we just reviewed them in terms of factors and then discuss options and see consensus. But first I will pause here and there is a hand up. Linda, thank you for asking to be recognized. For what reason would you like to be recognized?
We were talking about the four. The four things you're looking for, right? Where would trespass and financial stability go? Is that later?
Yeah, so basically those four dimensions that we discussed, they could come into any or all of those decisions. So basically, when you evaluate one over the other, what's the what's the metric or what's the measurement that gets one option over the other? Folks said whatever increases transparency, stability. So basically, this is the lens we're going to use as a board as we evaluate those decisions, if that makes sense. All right. Yeah, thank you for the question. So again, those are the decisions. We're going to go through them one by one. And we will work on this process. No votes will be taken on one decision before we discuss all four decisions. So we will vote on all four at the end. But definitely, we will deliberate on each one of them one by one. So we'll have the time to discuss. And at the end, when you're comfortable making a vote about each one of them, we'll do that toward the end of the meeting. So first, decision number one, search process are considering direct hire. I would like to ask our external legal counsel and just to start this conversation, external legal counsel Bob Seringer, you are familiar with him. He helps the organization. And our current executive director expressed interest in the hiring process and in being hired with either one of those two options. So she's going to be recused from this discussion and Haley's supporting us staffing, navigating this discussion. So feel free to ask any questions you have to Bob around this. But first, Bob, I would like to open up to you to discuss maybe all four decisions or go in directly to the decision number one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the board. I think we can just really quickly state what is on the slide in front of you, just to summarize what the four decisions are. And then we can take each one in more detail. The first decision that's going to be posed to the board is whether it wants to enter into a traditional search process or whether it would prefer to first consider a direct hire of the current interim executive director. The second decision is whether in this process, the board wants to update the executive director job description. The third decision is whether the board would authorize a salary range study in connection with the executive director position. And the fourth decision in front of the board is whether it wants to take the steps necessary to allow executive session deliberations about this hiring process. Or if instead it wants to have all meetings held in in public session or nearly all meetings in public session. So with that, I think we could move to the first decision. What we've tried to do here is with each of these decisions, identify what we think the binary choice is. There may be slight variations on each of these options, but I think you'll see that most of these are truly binary choices to be made by the board. And the first decision that that I expect the board will take up after we go through these is the question of whether the board wants to authorize a search process or whether it wants to first consider a direct hire of the interim executive director. The two options are described in a little more detail in the slide in front of you. With respect to conducting a search process, if that's what the board wanted to do, our expectation is that the that the board and the executive committee and the OSBA as an organization would follow the process that was set out in the hiring and executive director process that was adopted by the board in January of 2024, which sets out who does what and in what order. The so that's option one A. Option one B. Is instead of that to first consider whether to directly hire the interim executive director as the executive director. In which case, there would be a meeting at a later date to take that into consideration. And if the board decided to proceed in that fashion, based on current practices, if the board decided it wished to offer the position to the interim executive director, there'd be a delegation of authority to negotiate a an agreement with some parameters that are set by the board in advance. And then that would come back to the board for a final decision. One thing I want to emphasize here is that today the board is not being asked to make a decision on whether it wants to hire the current interim executive director as the executive director. So what you're what you're really deciding is whether you want to have that discussion at a later meeting. And I would encourage the board in deliberating about this to in well, my recommendation would be to avoid personnel discussions in your open session here, if that can be avoided in order to protect the privacy of the of any potential candidate. We'll discuss this. This also, these considerations also come up in a search process. But you want to protect the privacy of candidates to the extent possible. And also, I think you've probably heard this advice from your at the board level and your in your districts. You just want to protect against the possibility of somebody saying something that they in hindsight would regret having said in an open session because of the the legal ramifications of of those sorts of comments. I think I should stop there. There's no legal advice in that I have for you on choosing between these two options. I guess I should say that. These are really involve a policy choice on the board. Each is available to you and none is preferable to the other from the standpoint of any legal advice, legal advice that I would provide. And I'm happy to take any questions that people might have.
Is there any questions that you have? How about we entertain raising your hand? Raise your hand if you have any questions for Bob. And just to, as a reminder, this is not time for deliberation, but really asking questions on either option or the decision that's we're considering for Bob. You have Clyde. Clyde.
Yes, what's the policy reference for our hiring process?
Bob?
Yeah, so the the policy reference for conducting a search process is the hiring and executive director process that was put up on the screen a little bit earlier. It was adopted by the board in January of 2024.
What's the reference number?
I do not have that.
I can answer that. The process was voted on by the board of directors in January 19, 2024. And reflecting on Bob's guidance and correct me if I'm correct. Let me know if I'm right at this phone, Bob. This hiring process has the effect of a policy since the board has adopted it and it's 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 a meeting. However, it's not a formal policy as a policy number. It's a process that was adopted. And I believe Chris may have additional information about it since she was involved. Are you trying to add into the answer, Chris?
Well, you essentially answered it. I wanted to clarify because Mr. Rude asked specifically about the policy. And this is, this is not a policy. This is a guideline. So this is the guideline that the board adopted. And I don't have a policy number in front of me at this moment. But this is what's guiding our, this guideline is what's guiding our decision.
Can we, for anybody who hasn't noticed in the in the chat, Haley points out that the this process document is in your packet.
Oh, it is.
Any other questions?
Okay.
So, thank you, Bob. And before we go into discussion, just as to the process for the executive committee to set the agenda for this board and provide recommendations. The board have discussed all four decisions and they do have a recommendation on of an option for each other decision. This one, however, they want to recommend both options for the board to fully consider. And here is some considerations the executive committee wanted to share with you. One comment is the committee supports that everyone on this board gives full consideration of both options. We would like to provide the board an opportunity to engage in this discussion, which will make the board stronger and the outcome of this decision even better when we are all discussing it and reaching to this decision together. Having the discussion for us today will set the executive director that we hire for success. One of the colleagues on this board, the committee said, consider moving forward with considering a direct hire of the interim executive director strongly. Option number one B. However, or and would support the board moving forward with either option that the board concludes with. So those are the recommendations. The executive committee wants to fully support this board, considering whichever option that they would like to go forward with. And before we go back into the discussion, I want to just give another opportunity. If anybody have any additional thoughts or questions for Bob. I will reiterate some notes from Bob that he mentioned. It is important to avoid turning this discussion into an evaluation of an employee at this time. It is in the best interest of the organization to discuss evaluation your executive session in the future, in a future meeting if we do. And the question at this time is to consider whether to hire an employee is to consider whether to hire an employee without a search process, not if we should hire the employee at this time. Very gray, a very small fine line, but the distinction is very important right now, which is which process you would like to navigate. Option one A or option one B, which you might be very familiar with. You've seen it in your school districts. So before we go into discussion, I want to give us another opportunity here to pause and say, is there any considerations that we have not discussed yet that you would like to uplift in this conversation? And I will add transparency that a board member have mentioned today. Feel free to raise your hand. Is there anything you would like to highlight here to remind the board? Yeah, this is something we need to add, or this is something we need to emphasize in this conversation. All right, see none? I would like to ask Lanell to have us deliberate on which option would you like to recommend? As a reminder of the process, Lanell will go through the roll call, and feel free to say pass. And if you have something to add, please add, to maintain a good timely conversation, we will time the conversation for one minute for the first round. So please limit your conversation within one minute. One of the staff will nudge me when it's one minute is over, and I'll remind you to conclude your remarks. So with that, Lanell, please feel free to ask board members to contribute to which option do you recommend from the options on the screen?
Chris Cronin? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Lanell. Yes, I, as part of the executive committee, I felt that it's important to the board deliberate on both of these options. And the executive committee as a group, we recommended and that both of these be considered. Personally, I am very much in favor of considering a direct hire for all of the reasons that are listed on the consideration slide that Sammy presented to us. And I can go into detail about why I feel that that is an important and probably the correct direction for us at this time. But I think I'll save my remarks and let other board members speak. Thank you. Jackie Crook?
Jackie? I thought I had unmuted myself, but one B. And then we can have a discussion later on why.
Neelam Gupta?
Yeah, thanks. I liked the third bullet from the executive committee's discussions. I lean personally more towards one B, but also support the board having the discussion.
Lynda Hamilton?
I'm going to go with one B, but could change over discussion, but would like to see a pool of diverse candidates as well, since that's the caucus focus. The caucus of color focuses personal color leadership, apparently. It's my understanding. But I'm going to go with one B.
Chris Howitt?
Good morning. I am very strongly in favor of option one A, conducting a search. Looking back over the last, excuse me, looking over the last five years of the organization from where we were pre-COVID to where we are now. I think having someone bring up the transparency question, concern, as well as stability and strategic needs. I think it would be to the benefit of our members to be a little bit more expansive in our search and going for the full search process. I'll leave.
Tristan Urban?
Yeah, I am in favor of option one B, particularly for the bullet points referencing stability and financial impact. And I absolutely also recognize perhaps some questions around the transparency piece of that, but overall, I think for what I think this board and organization has been through in the last few months, I really think that stability moving forward piece is critical at this point. So I would go for one B. Thank you.
Greg Kents?
Yes, I'm leaning more toward one B because of the financial impact of our organization. A search, large search process is very expensive and a salary search is very expensive. Has a huge impact to our struggling financial stability. But at the same time, I'm worried about transparency with our entire organization, all of our members, and would probably support one A over one B, allowing more of the membership to at least see the process instead of just going up the line from what we already have, even though our current one is doing a good job.
Kristy Kotke?
I am strongly in favor of one B for the readiness piece, the efficiency piece, and the financial piece. My mention of transparency was more around, no matter whether we go with one A or one B, just that we, as we continue, for instance, with one B, that we just are having open conversations to be able to explain to our members what our thinking is around that path should we go forward. So the transparency piece was more about that and less about support for a giant, for a giant search process. I agree with you, Greg, the process of doing that now, and I would be interested to see if members, I think they might appreciate the fact that we are trying to be efficient. And as long as we're explaining our why, I have confidence with one B going forward.
Steve Lowell?
I recommend one B. Let me just remind everybody that we're two and a half million dollars. We're carrying a two and a half million dollar deficit this year. So I'm looking at the financial piece of this.
Alonso Oliveras?
Yes, I would say option one B for similar comments that have been said for financial impact and for stability.
Clyde Rude?
I will go with option one A, and I will echo Chris's concerns. And I would add that anything other than one A would be an injustice to all of our school boards that we represent.
Emily Smith?
I would lean toward one A, but I would not be in favor of engaging a search firm. I would like us to talk about the possibility of maybe just doing kind of a really small, like even just a job posting just for the sake of transparency. And then we would be able to choose the best candidate from whoever applied, but not doing a big search.
Dawn Watson?
I'm leaning towards one B. I do understand having, I agree with Emily. I don't think we should do a big search. If we do decide to go with one A, my main reasons are stability and financial, of course, and consistency. I think that not only the search costs money, but to get an executive director in and up to speed, that that takes a lot of time and money as well. And we've had a lot of changes in OSBA staff, and I really think the consistency for staff and for our districts would is very needed right now. So that's why I would do one B. Thank you.
Sammy Alizavru?
Thank you, Lanell. I will say this, as the presiding officer of this board, I want to support the outcome of this board. So I will share my preference, which is whichever option we end up voting on by the end of today, I want us to be locked in arms, supporting the process, and then supporting the next steps together and working strongly on making sure that we fulfill the considerations that we're talking about. So personally, I will support either decision of this, either option that the board will decide on. And I really appreciate the very good considerations that folks are sharing. So personally, I will be impartial here and say I'll support the decision of the majority and seek consensus that we will support the decision that we end up as a board collectively. And with that, Lanell, thank you. Let's go for another round. And with a prompt of, did you change your mind? Do you have questions to the other? Do you have questions to the other perspective? Or did the conversation that you heard so far give you other perspectives that you want to share? I will ask you, if you can, limit it to somewhere between 30 seconds and 45 seconds. Let's say 45 seconds maximum, just to stay on time. That would be very appreciated. So again, if you would like to speak again, we will go through a roll call again, and you can pass. But you can share if you change your mind, if you have additional thoughts from what you heard, or you have questions to other board members in general, please direct the comments to me. You have questions that you may want to hear, so we deliberate more toward a consensus. So with that, back to you, Lanell.
Chris Cronin? Thank you, Lanell. I just, again, appreciate hearing from everyone. I believe what I heard from everyone, whether some expressed some interest in a search that there's confidence in what we have been experiencing with our current interim executive director. I do want to point out, a search process can be very lengthy and very expensive. I spoke this morning with the EOU. You know, I'm involved with EOU, and our search process cost between 70 and $100,000. And that was according to our legal counsel, that was on the lower end of what a search firm charges. And so, and it took almost, you know, eight months. So
Can you conclude, please?
Yes. So that's, that's just a concern I would have.
Thank you.
This is Jackie, and I pass.
Neelam Gupta?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would add as to why I would support one B. You know, in our school district, we were kind of in a similar situation during the pandemic, and we chose to appoint from within for very similar reasons, for stability, for financial reasons, also for, you know, just continuity. And I think it's especially important as we're going into this 2025 legislative session, you know. So, yeah, I don't have any changes to what I said before, but just additions.
Lynda Hamilton?
I think I spoke wrong. I spoke about the caucus of color. That's the strong thing of having a candidate of color apply. And I don't think we have to go for outside search, but I think I said one B, and I'm in favor of one B for the, due to the impact of the financial, but we gotta do some searching, maybe that can help with the financial situation. And so I'm gonna go one A. Only because of this whole thing about having caucus of color wanting leadership. So maybe people can apply, and I'm not the one that's there. Outsider.
Chris Howitt?
I'm still going to stay with one A. I appreciated that the conversation about diversity was being brought up because I think that is an important part of doing a search. And a cert can be as big or small as we want it to be, as local as we want it to be, as much as we want to do some of the footwork compared to having someone do all of it. So a search does not have to be a big expensive thing. We're going through one right now, so I'm aware of that. And I think I don't want to sacrifice stability and readiness without doing some search for.
Tristan Urban?
Yeah, I really appreciate all of the sort of first and second thoughts around this, and I will stick with one B. And I do also think, as was previously mentioned, I think Neelam mentioned it, that something that had come up for me before was going into this long session. It is critical to kind of be able to hit the ground running with a lot of that work and really understanding where our organization is, where our districts are, particularly with state school fund and some of the big, big issues that are coming up. So that would be another reason why I will stick with that. But really appreciate the conversation, and it's given me a lot to think about. So thank you.
Greg Kents?
Yes, Emily brought up a great point in that the search process doesn't have to be gigantic. It doesn't have to be worldwide search, but it could be something that we could do from here on our own through RFPs and that kind of thing. So I'm going to lean toward option one A, primarily because I want the membership to be able to see that we have done some due diligence and have searched and decided on a candidate, even if that means we decide on direct hire after that search.
Kristy Kotke?
Yeah, I think I'm still with one B, but I did like the maybe compromise of just posting, not hiring the search firm for the reasons that Lynda thought made a really good point. And then Dawn's points about just comfort level of staff being able to maximize their efficiency, especially with this particular legislative session. So for all those reasons, I I still feel like one B is an option, but I'm open to the compromise. I would not be open to one A for a full search firm, but I'm open to the compromise of at least posting it. And we do that sometimes in school districts to speed things along.
Steve Lowell?
I'm still leaning toward one B. However, I will accept one A. Very short search. Eight weeks max.
Alonso Oliveras?
Yeah, I'd still stay with option one B, but I do like what Directors Kotke and Lowell mentioned possibly expanding or doing a compromise.
Clyde Rude?
I'm still sticking with one A. However, I like what Christie and Linda and many other board members are referring to as a quick or short search. It doesn't need to be expensive. It doesn't need to be extensive. But we do need to give some consideration to other candidates to see what is out there. Even though I have a direct feeling that Emily will probably prevail.
Emily Smith?
Yeah, I just have a question, I think maybe for Bob. Like, what are, what are our options as far as trying to do like an expedited internal only search? Is it realistic to say like, within 60 days, we're going to have this process completed and someone hired?
Is it realistic? I think that depends on the resources that all of the volunteers here can put to that. So I would start by saying that what's been described as an abbreviated search process is completely appropriate. That's, that option is completely available to the organization. And then it really comes down to because a lot of the work on this is shouldered by the executive committee and then the board. How quickly can these volunteers move to carry out the different steps that you would want to take? Because you have to do the posting, you'd have your initial screening, you'd set up interviews. carry out the different steps that you would want to take? Because you have to do the posting, you'd have your initial screening, you'd set up interviews. You conduct interviews, you normally have more than one round of of interviews. And then you need to get it back in front of the board for a decision. So that's a lot to to squeeze into sixty days. But it's, you know, I couldn't say that it's impossible.
Okay, thank you. So my my opinion is still the same. I would like to do an abbreviated search process saying like we want to have someone hired within sixty days or whatever we decide on.
Dawn Watson?
Um, hi, thank you. I'm still leaning towards one B. I would compromise on an abbreviated search. I would like to see it us pick someone by our September meeting. I'm really concerned if it goes out to October, November, they're not going to be up to speed for legislative and for our annual conference and for our legislative roadshows. And so that I would be willing to compromise as long as we got it done as soon as possible, because I I do have concerns of stability still and not only for our districts, but for our staff. And I think it's important, the knowledge that Emily has gotten is so important. And I don't know if a new executive director could get that knowledge as quickly. Thank you.
Sammy Aladaba?
Thank you, Lenell. I am going to continue to support the will of this board when it's votes either direction. I would add to the conversation that as a reminder, this process will be a good guideline for us if we if we choose to conduct a search process. And there will be another decision down the road that will help us have more expedited process that we would allow for an executive session deliberations. In my view, that will allow for some expedited process. The steps are fifteen and we might be able to pull it off in my from my personal experience and hearing from experts somewhere between eight weeks and three months. All the way, it could take two years. My concern is how much Bob's notes, how much of the volunteers can put in? And would this board be able to meet probably multiple times during those eight weeks? To interview or the final candidate, make a final decision, set parameters for negotiation of the tentative agreement. It's gonna be a heavy lift. And the compromise might be, I don't want to say that will be the compromise. We should not compromise on the work of this organization. So whatever decision we go for, one A or one B, we should keep stability in terms of making sure this board is supporting its staff, is supporting its members, and ensuring that we're ready to hit the road running with our partners for the legislative session. So that's the thing that I want to make sure our capacity to volunteer for the process, whether it's expedited or shortened, is not going to compromise our ability to support staff and the organization do its work. So it's a huge challenge and I'll continue to be impartial between one A and one B, supporting the will of the board. With that, we went to two rounds, and I see, Chris, you have your hands up. And in terms of fairness for everybody in this process, I want to ask you, is there any information that has not been shared that you really think we should really share it before we move on?
I do, and I think it will. Yes, I think it's relevant. And yes, I would like to do that. So
Please do so.
Okay.
Hi, you're muted.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I haven't been delivering to show up. So I will say I am still in favor of one A, but I will move to one B because the issue around being available and ready for legislative support, that meets our strategic needs and that also meets our readiness. I'm not making the decision based on a financial impact. We would do what we needed to do regardless of what it would cost us. And each of these things has a financial impact regardless of what we do. And down the line, we will be having additional employees to backfill potentially as we move forward. But otherwise, I would be willing to support one B and not hold up any further discussion. Final part, we were barely able to make a quorum this morning. I'm not optimistic that we could continue to make a quorum on additional special meetings in order to make this happen in a timely fashion. So with that, I would support one B, and I will just continue to nudge people to make sure that we're covering our bases.
All right, Linda, I'll recognize you for also additional forty five seconds.
Just reiterating what Dawn said, do we have to, I know due to financial impact and all that, it has to be someone ready for legislation. Do we have to do this now? Or is Emily willing to continue to be the interim interim until after this? Because if I'm not mistaken, there's some executive director training coming up, she's gonna tend. Do we have to do this right now? Could it be extended? Because that is a major thing for legislature to be prepared and someone who's knowledgeable.
Thank you, Linda, for the question, and thank you for raising it. I would say it is a prerogative of this board and not to I don't want to answer your question deterministically. I would say indecision is a decision and we could delay. However, I have heard repeatedly from board members and members across Oregon that OSBA needs to be ready with moving on forward. So not deciding right now may appear in my personal view and in my understanding from other board members across Oregon, that that means we're not ready to hit the road running. So really making a decision right now is my my strong recommendation is we make a decision one way or the other to move move forward as soon as possible with the process. So that's my answer as a summary. I hope that helps with that. Team, we had really good discussion. And I believe you might be ready to vote, but we're not gonna vote now. But if you made your mind and you heard other folks, I will entertain a motion after we discuss other options, other decisions that we need to make. So let's discuss the other options. They may give you also a better picture of how we will navigate either of these options as we move forward. So put in a note here whether you're in favor of one A or one B and how you want to move forward. And and let's move on to the next decision. And we'll be much briefer in each one of those decisions. The second decision is updating the executive director job description. Bob, take it away.
I I almost started this, or I guess I am. I'm starting this by saying that this is a much easier decision for the board to make, but I could regret saying that at the outset. We'll see how this goes. The the this next decision is whether to update the executive director job description. It really is a yes or no answer to that question. And the reason that it's being presented to the board is that in the preparation for this process, it's my understanding that and this is not too surprising, given that you had a long term executive director who who then left that there wasn't a clearly established executive director position description in place. And so the 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 question before the the board is whether it wants to at this time do the work necessary to to prepare and adopt an executive director job description, both to resolve discrepancies that might exist between different forms that have been discovered in the historical documents. And then also to update it so that it is consistent with common standard practices at this time. On this decision, I do have advice for the board, which is that it would be important for the board to adopt an updated job description. And it should do this regardless of what choice it makes in relation to the previous decision. Because whoever steps into that position should have a clear understanding of what is expected of them, and that's what the job description should do.
Thank you, Bob. The executive committee have a recommendation for you is to for the board to adopt an updated job description for the executive director position. So staff will engage with in a process with external experts who will help us get modified or updated executive director position description. And in a future board meeting, the board will get to deliberate and approve such a position description. So that's the recommendation. The summary of the executive committee recommendation rationale, this is the right time to do it. It's been a while since it's been updated. It's logical and necessary. And if I may add, legal counsel is strongly recommending us to do it. That appears to make another good argument in favor of two A. So with that, before we go into deliberation or considerations, any questions for legal counsel? Raise your hand, please. Since there's no hands raised, what factors should be considered when evaluating these options? I'll remind us of the factors that we discussed. Is there any factors you want to uplift here in this conversation? As a reminder, we're not debating on the options, just to center our the conversation on those considerations. Strategic needs, stability, readiness, financial impact considerations, and transparency. Right, see none. I'll assume concurrence on that these are the factors we're gonna center. So I want to ask you now, which option do you recommend? I'm gonna assume it's gonna be a quick conversation. I may regret that too. With that in mind, raise your hand if you have an option that you recommend for the board. All right, Chair recognizes Emily Smith.
Thank you. I don't see why we wouldn't update the job description. So I absolutely think, yes, we should do two A, adopt an updated job description.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Chris Howitt.
Anytime there's a change in a person in the position, we should do an updated job description. And because this one hasn't been done for a while, it absolutely needs to be updated.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Greg Kents.
Yes, two A, the board adopts the updated job description absolutely needed. I'm sad that we don't have a more up to date one, but we're gonna go and get this done.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Clyde Rude.
I go with two A as well. We have to stay on top of what's going on in in our organization and 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 stay current.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Linda Hamilton.
Yes, I could. I I couldn't find a copy of the latest job description, but absolutely two A updated, but I would like a copy of the the most one we have, the most recent one we have.
Absolutely. Do we have that available in any of the packets that we have sent, Emily Haley?
That is not in the board packet today. I can definitely email that out to the board so they can see what we were able to find.
Thank you, please do. Thank you, Linda, for the inquiry, and we will make sure it's shared with the board. Seeing there's no hands up, I am going to assume that there is an overall main concurrence for two A, and we will move forward for our votes toward two A in the end of this meeting. Now we're gonna go for the third decision. So again, make sure you know it's on your on your notepad, which one you're in favor of. And let's go for decision three, obtaining a salary range study.
Thank you, Ms. President. This is another yes or no answer. And the question is whether the board would want to authorize OSBA to undertake or obtain a salary range study to assist with setting the salary range for the executive director position. The idea here would be that if if this study were obtained, it would provide the board with data that it could use to understand what an appropriate salary range would be, both to be competitive in in pursuing candidates, and then also to ensure that whoever is hired is hired at an appropriate compensation level. This is not, there are no real legal considerations associated with this. It's a policy decision for the board. And happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Any questions for legal counsel? Tristan?
Do we know sort of where, like a general idea of where we land, just sort of if if we were to, you know, undertake this process? I know sort of in my current district, we knew going in, we were really well below sort of districts our size. So it was kind of imperative that we did that study to kind of better understand what that average was. Do we have a sense of of that for this particular role yet?
I I know I don't. I'd have to defer to others on whether they think they have that information available to them.
So if okay, Tristan, how we how do you feel about we we addressed that during deliberation, I might have some comments toward that.
Yeah, that's no problem. And if there's not an answer, that's fine, too. I was just just curious. So no, no big deal.
Sounds good.
I think the lack of that information is why the the question is being asked.
Fair point.
Linda?
It is my it's my understanding that was one done, a little bit of, I don't know how extensive it was, but before they came to the salary of two hundred and fifty thousand annual, that was a study done. That's at least that was my understanding. So they might already have some information of how they come to that number.
Thank you, Linda. Do you have any questions for Bob?
No. Other than Bob, no, no.
I don't know the answer to that, Director Hamilton. I that that could be, but I just don't know whether that happened.
Neelam?
My recollection was that it was kind of informally done. It wasn't a formal, if I'm recalling correctly. But I could be completely mistaken. You know, and I apologize, I had to step away for just a minute. Is there a a price range you would put on doing a salary study?
Ms. President, do you have information on that?
I would say there, I don't want to put a range publicly. That's might actually inform potential bidders about the
Okay, that's that's totally fine. But I'm just, I'm I'm curious, like, you know, if it's excessively expensive endeavor.
Yeah, in my personal view, and I'll I'll maybe combine Tristan's questions and Neelam. In my personal view, it is very helpful for the board, regardless which option, whether we're negotiating with an intern director as we consider hiring the intern director, or we're going for a full search. It's very important for us to have that range, and the cost will be worth it. The certain range, I don't want to give a number, but I would say it will it will pay off by giving this board a good perspective of of what number range we're negotiating with and also retaining the person that we're hiring for a long time because they're getting a competitive salary. So I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, that's really helpful. Thank you.
All right, Jackie, and then Linda, you'll you'll get another chance to speak. Jackie.
One of the things that we, it's the cart before the horse. First of all, we have to have the duties, the job description before we can go out for salary search because we have to know what the the job is that the range is going to affect. So and timing is, you know, is one of our big problems today. But this, we're going to have to move pretty fast in getting things in line so that we can do a job description, do a salary search. But it's, and I think I agree with you, Sammy, that it's gonna behoove us, but I I'm with Dawn on the financial impact of everything we're doing right now.
Thank you, Jackie. So another reminder of the parameters, I'm gonna pause for a second and ask, is there anything you want to highlight that we did not talk about in terms of parameters that influence our decision? We talked about strategic needs, stability, readiness, financial considerations, financial impact considerations, and transparency. See none? I think we started a little bit of, oh, sorry. Jackie, Linda, and then Clyde, are you speaking for the parameters or ready for to go for discussion? Are you speaking for the parameters or ready for to go for discussion? I'll let's continue to raise your hands about the parameters. Discussion, okay, let's go for a discussion, Linda and then Clyde. And please raise your hands if you would like to contribute to the discussion, Linda.
I think I'm off task right now, I'm getting, I'm getting all convoluted, I'm struggling, I'm struggling with this, it's very hard decision because between one A and one B, because if we can keep Emily and negotiate a decent salary, that would be the thing to do, I would think, due to financial input, so I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Okay. And actually, sorry, I forgot to share with your recommendation of the committee, the committee recommends option three A. The option will assist the board reaching a fair and competitive salary range for the ED position. Back to the discussion, which option do you recommend, Clyde and then Chris, Clyde?
All right, in the parameters, we probably need to put timeliness in there for like a timeline. Because everything we've talked about today has done with timing and having enough time and pushing forward like at running speed. As far as we're on updating the the description. I'm for, oh, the salary. Lost track where I'm at, you keep switching back and forth on these screens.
No, we are now at the salary range.
Yep, I'm for the A position, we do need to re look at it, readdress it, make sure we're paying the appropriate amount.
Thank you, Dawn, did I see your hand up?
Yes, but I was gonna give someone else a turn, but thank you. I I am fine with going out for salary, my concern is of course cost of that. And second, my concern is, I believe when we've gone to the past, it's very it's very hard to get a comparable rate, and so if you're having someone go out for salary, I think that it's, I wanna make sure that we're actually getting something comparable and not just like an executive director for this. So that's my concern is, I wanna make sure that it's something that seems like a match and the board feels like it's a good match of comparable, not just comparing different executive director type jobs. That makes sense.
Thank you. Linda, remind me, did you speak on this item yet? If you did, I'll go for Emily.
I lowered my hand, I was, I'm a three A, I'm sorry, I think I did.
Thank you. Emily and then Chris, no problem, Emily?
I would be in favor of three A, I think getting data is almost always a good idea, but I would definitely echo what Dawn said, that we need to make really sure that the data are accurate and that we're looking at comparable positions.
Right, first then Greg, Chris, thank you.
I'm in, I'm in favor of three A, it fits in with our strategic needs. It costs us money to continue to have to find a new executive director because we're not paying enough. Likewise, it works with transparency with our members that we're showing that this is what the job entails, this is what the money is, and it's not comparing this executive position to a superintendent position in a district. And that avoids some of the sticker chalk, and we say, yes, this is what it costs to get a quality executive director for our organization.
Thank you, Chris, Greg.
It's I'm more concerned about what we can afford rather than what we, what the world says we need to pay. I've always been more concerned about somebody looking at the job and going, oh, they have a great salary, so I'm gonna go there, rather than I'm gonna go there because I have something to to give to that organization. It's frustrating when the world dictates to us what we should have to pay. There are districts all over this state who promised money to their teachers, promised money to their staff, and then end up can't can't pay it because they've overpromised and only because other districts like us pay that much, so we have to pay that much. And then, and ultimate end, the education of our students suffers.
Thank you, Greg, seeing there's no hands up, it looks like it's overwhelming notes about three A and there is cautionary information about the cost, making sure that fiscal impact is being paid attention to. Personally, I do recommend that we also go for three A, it will make the process really easier for the board to make the right decision around the salary and have a reference there. And we've heard from the committee members and from this board that we need to make sure that comparators, what are we comparing with, is thoughts as being made very thoughtfully, if that makes sense. So with that, please put a note on your notepad, which option you're in favor of. And we will pause on this decision and go to decision four, the last one. Bob, take it away.
All right. So the fourth question has to do with the the process that the board would follow in relation to Oregon's public meetings law. The default rule in your deliberations, as you all know, is that all of your all deliberations in the quorum of the board need to occur in a properly called public meeting like this one. And that can only be avoided if there are the, if you meet the statutory criteria for an executive session, which would allow the board to meet outside of a public meeting, an open meeting. And and conduct deliberations outside. Reminder that even if you're allowed to have deliberations in the executive session, ultimately, your decision will need to be made in an open session. As in almost all cases, you're not allowed to make the decision in the executive session. When it comes to hiring the chief executive officer of a public body, Oregon law requires certain steps be taken in advance if the board wants to hold an executive session to deliberate about that hiring process. And you see those described in option four A. Here in front of you on the slide, four A is 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 the the option that would allow the board to conduct interviews and deliberations in an executive session before making a decision on hiring. And those steps that you would need to take in advance would be to advertise the executive director vacancy. You would need to adopt hiring procedures and hiring standards, criteria and policy directives, which would need to be done in, you know, you have to adopt those things in an open meeting in which the public has been allowed to provide comment. This, in most cases, this is the the path that a board would take as it enters a hiring process, particularly if there's going to be any sort of search process. The reason is twofold, really. One is that the it is often the case that candidates for a position, especially at the early stage, want to be able to submit their applications confidentially and and be involved in a in a confidential process at the beginning at least. And executive sessions allow some flexibility in doing that. And then, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, having, because there are employment law layers to everything that you're doing, there is some benefit in allowing for more private discussions of the qualifications of candidates. And to the extent that you're evaluating a current employee, doing that in a private setting rather than in an open setting has some risk management benefits as well. So the options before you are to take the steps necessary to allow for some deliberations in executive session, that's option four A. Or if the board would prefer to have all of its deliberations about this hiring process conducted in open meetings, then you can choose option four B.
Before we share the recommendation of the executive committee and enter into deliberation, I would like to entertain any questions for Bob, please direct to your questions for Bob by raising your hand. Seeing there is no questions. The executive committee recommends option four A, which is allowing for a process that's where we can conduct interviews and deliberate an executive session before making a decision in public. The rationale of the recommendation of the executive committee, this option was recommended by legal counsel to reduce liability exposure, allows for the board to deliberate an executive session which protects applicant or applicant's privacy. The committee recommends this option for whichever hiring path, decision one A or decision one B. So no matter what we do in decision one, they recommend that we go for four A, which is this process that you see on the screen in white text. The board may take regarding what we wanna consider in here. So with that, I'm gonna review again the considerations that we talked about. Strategic needs, stability, readiness, fiscal impacts, transparency and timeliness. Is there anything else you would like to add? See none? Which option do you recommend, please raise your hand. First hand is out, is Linda and then Tristan, Linda, go for it.
Four A. But I I got off track, for some reason, I was thinking he was asking for something else before going to this. But I'm interested in staff input for the atmosphere of the workplace, whether it's a healthy working environment type. Did you guys do anything, a survey or anything to them on this process, hiring process?
We did not, but I would refer to two elements here, or two considerations I can share with you, Linda. And the Grady group, there is input from staff about some strategic needs for this organization. Also, even if we go for four A, the process that we have allows for inputs from stakeholders and employees. So their inputs will actually be possible with this option.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tristan.
Yeah, so having just done this exact thing in my own district, I I would wholeheartedly go for four A. And that was also sort of, funnily enough, the also the advice of OSBA folks. And primarily for the purpose of regardless of if we go back, you know, to the one A or one B, the, even if you did a small search, if that was the compromise, whatever that decision was, there are, the majority of candidates, especially at this point, would not, you know, they're already having positions that they probably would assume they would be doing in the fall. They're not going to want that open public process. And so you would potentially, if you were going to do a search, lose a whole lot of probably the more qualified candidates because they would not want that open process. And we had a lot of good conversation with our constituent groups and and the public around that qualities and qualifications so that they felt like they really had a voice in the process. And so there was that transparency piece happening, even though it was a closed or confidential process. And it worked incredibly well, so I would absolutely recommend and support option four A.
Thank you, Tristan. And moving forward, if you can, thank you, very valuable inputs. If you can limit the conversation to a minute, so we can stay on track, that would be great, but really valuable information, Linda and Tristan, we have shared, Chris?
For A, for exactly all the reasons that Tristan did said, as long as we have all of our hiring procedures, our criteria and everything else in place that is public, transparent, and absolutely have that conversation that we can have at a different level and still be able to get the work done. And Tristan, I'm gonna call you later, so.
Neela?
Four A.
Thank you, Greg.
Yes, I'm, I'd like all the language of four A, I recommend that one.
Thank you, Clyde. Clyde, your hands is up.
Sorry, had to unmute. I'm gonna go with four A. I like what everyone's saying, I also like what Linda said about staff input, staff input is extremely important to me because without the staff behind us, you know, we really won't have a successful time.
Well said, Clyde, with that, I'll let you have the last word since there's no hands up. And I would say there's concurrence, if not consensus, actually on four A. So we're gonna, please, notes for eight on your notepad, it seems, or or four B if you're in opposition, but you have not spoken. So write down what option you're in favor of, it seems to be that four A is what the board is leaning toward. Now it's time to make the decisions, formal decisions. So to do that, I do want to ask you, well, let's do a recap. Here's a recap, the board have discussed decision one. It seems to appear that the majority of those who discussed the decision one were leaning toward consider direct hire of interim ED. However, there was discussion in favor of search process. And there was a discussion around search process that could be limited or expedited instead of thorough. There were some pros and cons that were shared about each of them. And there was a sentiment that whatever we do, we need to make sure we ensure the considerations that we talked about are being fulfilled. Decision two, three, both of them, there is concurrence, that's the answer to the question is yes, which is option A. And decision four, there was a consensus on four A, which is we go for executive session deliberation option. Did I summarize that correctly? I believe so, awesome. So now we go into motions. This board have the ability to make any motions that it sees fit. However, I will share with you a sample motion for the options that you would like to consider. Dawn and Chris, are you getting ready for a motion or a point of order? Okay, so let me just share with the board how we will go over this. The president at this time is entertaining motions from the board on the four decisions being considered. Sample motions will be provided for your convenience and consideration. If you have an alternative motion being considered, please type it first, ask to be recognized, raise your hand. When recognized, please read your motion. After reading your motion, please send the text motion to Lina via the chat function. That is only if your sample, your motion is different than a sample motion on the screen. So now we're going to go for the first decision that we deliberated on at the beginning of this meeting. Would you like to conduct a search process for hiring the executive director? Or would you like to move to consider hiring, not hiring, consider hiring the interim executive director as the executive director at this time? Chris, for what reason are you trying, asking to be recognized?
Mr. President, I wish to make a motion.
Please state your motion.
I move that the board consider hiring the interim executive director as the executive director.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and who seconded it?
Christie Cockey.
Christie, thank you, Christie, it's been moved and seconded that the board consider hiring the interim executive director as the executive director. Is there any discussion or further discussion on the motion? Chris?
Mr. President, one of the reasons that I moved to consider a direct hire is I feel that it's absolutely the right decision to make at this time. In effect, we have had a year-long job interview with the current executive director. Seven, a year in employment with OSBA, becoming familiar with OSBA's people and practices and strategic goals, and has led a lot of that work, seven months as the interim and acting executive director. I do not think in a limited search is a good idea at all. It it would, I've been part of a an expedited executive search and it is extremely demanding on staff time and also on board time. And I can just tell you, if that is the if that's what the board decides to do, we are all going to be canceling other plans so that we can conduct and and complete this search in a timely fashion. We have a lot of work to do beginning this fall. And I I don't think an expedited And I, I don't think an expedited or any kind of a search process is in the best interest of any of, of OSBA or of, uh, any of the considerations that we have said that we are, uh, making as our priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Um, I, I, I agree with some of what, uh, Chris Cronin has said, but if we are going to vote on this to, uh, hire our direct, um, interim, um, ED is that we have a negotiated salary and we have input from the staff. That is very important, a healthy working environment and input from the staff to move forward before we can say yes or no.
Thank you, Linda. Noted. And I will assume the board and the committee agrees, uh, with, uh, your ask and will ensure that is incorporated in the process moving forward. Thank you, Linda. Tristan?
Oh, I was just going to say, I just wanted to make sure it was clear that this, I, and I think this, the staff input is important, but this is simply, um, not moving ahead with the hiring, but considering doing this process and just making that distinction in so that as people are voting that that was clear.
Correct, Tristan, and thank you for the clarification. Clyde?
I wanna, Tristan's point was, Tristan's point was my point. Had to make sure I was unmuted. Um, I also feel like we are, by making this motion right now, we are rushing, we are not considering the other three motions or topics that we had. We should think if we don't have enough time to adequately address what we're doing, we should stick with Emily in her position right now. And then after the legislative, uh, executive first, or legislative session, readdress this topic so that we are taking our due diligence and our time in order to appropriately fill this position.
Thank you, Clyde. Chris?
Changed my mind.
Thank you. Uh, Greg?
Yes, to, to Clyde's point there, um, this option one B says, I move the board consider hiring the interim executive director as the executive director. And this means that this is just a consider, the consideration, as you stated, Mr. President, that this is not hiring, it is consider hiring, which means we could say the process is going to take us till after the legislative session. This motion is, uh, about considering hiring, not actually hiring.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, so, uh, you're, you're right in terms of we are considering and the text in gray under one B is exactly what we are going to follow. The following steps is legal counsel will provide us a modified process, uh, that will incorporate, uh, a negotiation of a tentative agreement, incorporating, uh, the salary study and the job description update into the steps that we do. Uh, assuming we're going to vote on that, of course, uh, and I'm assuming that the board will vote for that from the discussion. And then we end up presenting to the board a final, uh, tentative agreements that we discussed with the interim executive director, potentially if we decide on, on the last decision to do an executive, uh, session deliberation, we'll have an opportunity to do an evaluation process of our candidates. Uh, so all of that will follow, uh, with a proposed process that Bob will share with the executive committee. So to, to, to comment on what you just said, you are correct, we are considering the hiring. Uh, the timeline though will be shared with this board, uh, for an agreement on what's the best timeline. Neelam?
Um, I just want to say, I wa, I really want to vote, um, but I, I do have to, um, get going. I have a meeting starting, um, and, if, if we can vote, I can stick around for one more minute.
If there is no objection, we'll go there and Linnell, or, uh, someone other than Linnell, because Linnell will, uh, call for a roll call. Please tell me if we're going to lose quorum. Uh, I'm going to, uh, uh, do a combined motion of the other three. Uh, so let's go for a motion. Uh, sorry, let's go for a vote, uh, that uh, we, it's been moved for option one B. As you see, it's on the screen and we're now, we're going to go for a roll call. Please unmute and let's go for, uh, a roll call, Linnell.
Chris Cronin?
Yes.
Jackie Crook?
Yes.
Neelam Gupta?
Yes.
Linda Hamilton? Linda?
Linda Hamilton, how do you vote?
This is for consider, correct?
Yes, the motion is as stated on the screen. It is to consider hiring the interim director and the process is mentioned in gray.
Abstain.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Tristan Urban?
Yes.
Greg Kents?
Yes.
Christie Cockey?
Yes.
Steve Lo?
Yes.
Alonso Oliveras?
Yes.
Clyde Rude?
Yes.
Emily Smith?
Yes.
Don Watson?
Yes.
The motion passes with 12 votes and one abstain.
Motion passes. Thank you. And with that number, I believe we still have a quorum. Neelam, you are excused if you really need to.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Bye.
Absolutely. Thank you. So the next motion is, uh, whether to authorize OSBA staff to retain outside contractor, uh, to review executive director job description, or we proceed without doing so. There was an overwhelming, uh, consensus there, uh, uh, on 2A as a reminder, uh, the president entertains a motion. Greg?
And move the board proceeds without, I said, well, I move to authorize OSBA staff to retain an outside contractor to review the executive director job description and bring back a proposed updated executive director job description for the board's review and approval.
Second.
And it's been seconded by, uh, Christie. Uh, thank you. Is there any discussion or final discussion on the motion? Done.
Thank you, and I apologize for not bringing this up earlier when we had discussion. Um, I am really concerned about the, um, hiring the outside contractor. I think that, uh, time-wise and money-wise, I don't want this to be dragged on as, as possible. And I feel like we have NSBA and other state organizations that could help us with, um, giving us samples and we could maybe use that, um, information to maybe speed up the process a little bit and have what other states are doing and what NSBA agrees with. So that's kind of where I'm leaning to. I, I, I really want to be cautious of time and money, but I do think it needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Dawn. Uh, in favor of the motion, I'll recognize myself to the notes that you mentioned because legal counsel shared with me a consideration. Uh, and Haley, correct me if I'm right here, since this is a job description of their boss, uh, we may need to, uh, preclude all of OSBA staff from participating in leading that process. They may have an input for it with the, uh, external contractor, but there might be some challenges there. Uh, Haley and Bob, is my sentiments correct or accurate?
Correct. That puts me in a very interesting position to draft my own boss's job description. So my personal preference would be that I get to work with somebody on the outside to help develop that. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris, and then Jackie. Chris?
Yeah, absolutely. And, um, using the word outside counsel does not preclude that we could get help from NSBA or from another state association. It's a, it just means we're not doing it in-house.
Yes, outside contractor, correct. Jackie?
Um, I, I'm very concerned about the fact that we're going outside for the, uh, job description, outside for the salary, uh, search. So I, I, budget-wise, um, I think we need to consider what it is that is the most important for us to go outside for. And, um, and I, I can't support 2A. I thought I did, somehow I spaced it. But anyway, um, I, I think it's, uh, unless it's a very minimal amount of money, um, at 2.5 million, we're getting further and further in debt. I, and, and I don't know if it's included in our budget propos, our adopted budget.
Thank you, Jackie. Chris?
Is it, which Chris? Me?
Uh, Cronin, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I really hear you and I, you know, we've had these discussions about, uh, financial considerations. I, I, I share those deeply. I will just, uh, say that, um, not doing these, uh, not getting legal counsel and not, uh, getting outside expertise is, is potentially going to cost the board a lot more than if we do it right the first time. And so in my opinion, this is the, the prudent and financially responsible way to proceed is in both of these cases and getting a salary range and also in getting a job description. That is not that we're going to hire an, an expensive firm to do this, but to do some due diligence is what we're, we're talking about instead of just accepting what we currently have. So I, I, I want to reassure my fellow board members that I, I think that this is intended to be the financially responsible way to proceed with this. And I support what your, where your hearts are coming from for sure.
Thank you, Chris. Linda?
You know, I'm, I'm starting on abstain from, I'm getting confused because the word considered. I thought we had the option of either to hire the interim, to hire our current interim director, or go out for a search. So I'm a little confused on consider it because are we going to consider? You know, it's like, well, we may, we may not, but then it, it could, if we, I feel like we're rushing and if we go with what we have.
Uh, Mr. Mr. President, I, uh, with respect to my, uh, fellow board member, Director Hamilton, uh, Mr. President, I believe we've already, uh, decided that particular issue. And I think we need to move on with respect in, in respect with, to our other board members.
Thank you. Uh, yes, so we are debating, debating or deliberating on the motion about the job description specifically. Uh, Linda?
All right, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chris Cronin.
Thank you. Done.
I just wanted to be clear. I think a combination and I, the reason I was mentioning NSBA is because the state of Washington just went through some similar stuff. And it'll be nice to have their input and their information. So we're not starting from scratch and have a base to help save time because they probably have some ideas and suggestions that that way will just be more efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. And to that, I would like to add information to the board. I already reached out to the president of Washington State and asked them about their process. I do have the profile that they have, it's publicly available, and also some feedback about how we, they went through their process and including the, the job profile. And I'll ensure as I work with staff, uh, retaining outside consult contractor, that, uh, whatever information that's publicly available or that I have access to through our colleagues from Washington, because they're hiring an executive director right now as well, uh, will be available for us. Uh, so we make sure the scope is, is, is very focused and, uh, not replicated. With that, I don't see any further discussion unless Linda, you're going for a second, uh, notes. There's, is that yes?
No, I just, no, no, I let my hand down. I just think we need to move, my options are confused whether we should hire, go ahead, move forward with our current director and it would save some time. It doesn't, the options confuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. So right now we have concluded, uh, the discussion on the specific motion regarding to the job description and the motion, uh, that's been, uh, moved for and seconded is to authorize OSBA staff to retain an outside contractor to review the executive director job description and bring back a proposed updated executive director job description for the board's review and approval. On the motion, is there anyone in objection to the motion? If you have an objection to the motion, please unmute and say nay.
Nay.
Is there anyone objection, objecting to the motion? There is one nay?
Mr. President, could you make sure that whoever is voting against this state their name as well so that we can hear who actually said it?
Thank you. I was going to check with legal counsel if, uh, I can declare the votes with, uh, nays being stated. So Jackie Crook is a nay. Is there anyone else in, as a nay? See none. Uh, Bob, is it appropriate for me to declare that the motion passes with one, uh, opposition?
Yes.
The motion passes with, uh, Director Jackie Crook in opposition only. Passes. Thank you. And Linda, uh, are you asking for a point of order or should we go to the third, uh, votes?
Oh, nay, nay, just go on to the third. I'm sorry.
Are you were a nay?
Yes.
Okay, I have to be a little bit technical here. We concluded the votes, uh, should we go for reconsideration or shall I say it's too late to vote?
It's too late. You can, you can move forward. It's, I can abstain, no problem.
Actually, your, your vote is being recorded in favor because you did not say nay at the time. Is that okay with you, Linda?
Okay.
Okay, we're going to move forward. Option 3A or 3B? Is there a motion? As a reminder, there was overwhelming, uh, consensus on 3A. Uh, Linda and then Chris. Linda?
One is not working, my.
Hmm. Chris?
Mr. Chair, I would move to authorize OSBA staff to retain an outside contractor to conduct a salary range study to assist with setting a salary range for the, uh, executive director position.
I'll second.
It's been seconded? Is there any further discussion on the motion? Any final discussion? There's no final discussion. It's been moved and seconded to authorize OSBA staff to retain an outside contractor to conduct a salary range study to assist with setting a salary range for the executive director position. We're going to enter to a vote. Is there anyone in opposition of approving this? Please unmute and say nay. We are entering a vote on option 3A, as stated and underlined on the screen. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Passes unanimously. As a reminder, on the, the fourth decision, 4A, uh, gained, uh, the, uh, consensus of the committee of the board. Chris, uh, for what reason are you trying to recognize enough this motion? Please state it.
I move that the board follow a process that allows it to conduct interviews and deliberate in executive session before making a decision, which also includes the ability to interview candidates without making their names public.
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie Cottick for seconding. Uh, thank you, uh, Chris for the motion. Is there any final discussion on the motion as stated and under option 4A? See, there is no further, or no discussion on 4A. We discussed earlier. I'd like to thank all for their contribution to this important conversation and we're going to enter into a vote, uh, by opposition on the following motion. It's been moved that the board follow a process that's allows to conduct interviews and deliberate in the executive session before making a decision, which also includes the ability to interview candidates without making their names public. Is there anyone in opposition to the motion? Please unmute and say nay. Is there anyone in opposition to the motion? Please unmute and say nay. Is there anyone in opposition of the motion? Please unmute and say nay. Seen there's no opposition, the motion passes unanimously. All right, we do have one additional technical, uh, motion for, uh, under 4A. And since we did adopt 4A, uh, there are technical things under the purview of the board. I would like to ask you to delegate to staff to advertise the vacancy and also work with legal counsel on the procedures, standard criteria and policy directives. To advertise the vacancy and also work with legal counsel on the procedures, standards, criteria and policy directives. For the board at future OSBA board meeting. Under the decision-making process that we considered, which is considering hiring the interim executive director. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion as stated on the screen.
Chris Howard, I move to authorize OSBA staff to advertise the executive director vacancy. On the OSBA website and work with outside legal counsel on hiring procedures, standards, criteria. And policy directives for the board to consider at a future OSBA board meeting that is open to the public and includes public comment period.
I'll second.
Been seconded, I will provide a short comment here. This is based on legal counsel, if we would like to have executive session. Those are some requirements that we need to do in order to be able to follow that path. So that's why we're discussing this motion, we'll entertain further discussions. Greg?
So we just considered one of our four. Four considerations there, one of them was that we would can, consider the hiring. And right now, you're saying that we have to advertise a vacancy? Isn't that kind of stepping on that? We haven't even decided whether we're, whether we're going to hire it, said that we were, we would be. Considering the hiring, and now you're gonna advertise a vacancy. I am confused as to what that means.
And I believe Bob will be the best to clarify that confusion. Bob?
Yeah, and I, and I understand that, there, there definitely is some tension in that because the statute is written in a way that kind of assumes that. A public body is going through a search process, but. The, what you're being asked to do here, what you would, what you would be doing if you pass this motion is to simply advertise the fact of the vacancy. Which is in fact true. The permanent executive director position is vacant as a result of. The termination of the employment of Jim Green. And, and so the idea here is that. OSBA would satisfy the statutory requirement of advertising the fact of the vacancy. But based on your earlier decision, you would not be soliciting. Applications from people at this time at least, who might be interested in, in applying for that position.
Thank you. Any further deliberation or discussion or questions on the motion? See none, we will enter into a vote by, sorry, Clyde, please.
So we're gonna advertise that we have a vacancy, are we still gonna be able to accept applications if someone submits?
Bob?
Um. The board can decide what it, if somebody were to just. Decide on their own, just as they could today, that they wanted to send in an application. I suppose the board could do whatever it wants with those applications that are received. There's no formal acceptance process that you would have at this time, though.
Thank you, Bob, and consistent with transparency, the communication from the board will be that we are considering to hire the interim director. And to your answer, Bob, shall any applications arrive to this board will praise the board about it. And in a, in a manner that satisfies legal requirements, is that something that you feel is going to be a, a good path forward?
I think that would, yes, that would fairly describe the, the path you would take.
Thank you. Chris, Tristan and Greg. And just as a reminder, we have two minutes for the meeting. Chris?
Okay, yes, so we, um. It's considered, we are not offering a job to anyone, we cannot offer a job to anyone unless we declare the position vacant so that there's actually a vacancy. The person that we may consider for the job, after the job description is updated, after the salary range is updated. And after something else was updated, may consider that they don't want the job. And so I think that whoever applies for the job to go into the hat for consideration because it's all consideration. It just means that we're not actively going out and searching with a search firm to bring us additional candidates. That is how I understand it, and that was what my vote was intended for.
Thank you. Greg, I would like to say the last word is yours unless someone really insists to raise their hands afterwards, I'll recognize you still, but we have one minute to go. Greg?
Yes, I was just saying that when we send this vacancy notice out, we could put on there, you know, we're not accepting. You know, there's no parameters on there for accepting applications, it's just merely the advertisement of the vacancy. We could put that kind of language on there so that we don't have to deal with that, but I agree, there is a way that we could. Have those applications tabled and could keep them. In the waiting room for the time that we decide to go forward on our hiring process.
Thank you, if there's no objection, I wanna honor everybody's time, if there's no objection, please feel free to object, we're gonna lose you with a cor, and lose a quorum. We're gonna extend debate for two more minutes for discussion and debate. Clyde?
Oh, I was just in support of, in the posting, just say we would accept applications.
Any further discussion, Bob, if you wanna share any clarification?
I feel like I need to be clear about this, that it, given the decision that the board has already made at this point that it wants to first. Consider whether to hire the interim director. I would encourage the board not to state in the advertisement that, that OSBA will accept. Applications, because I think that would be misleading. If the, if the board did decide not to proceed to hire the interim executive director, that would be the time to. Announce that OSBA would be accepting applications.
Thank you, Bob. Please limit it to thirty seconds maximum. Linda and then Tristan. Linda?
I just liked the second word Bob just said, he hit it, what I was gonna say. I think the conversation need to start with our current executive director as to whether. She wants to accept a position and be considered for the position, what the salary looks like. And then we can go from there, but I, I second what Bob said, we don't wanna be misleading, but I, I feel like Emily needs to. Need an opportunity to share with us and, and the staff, and, and the staff, they both need opportunity to share with us.
Thank you, Linda. Well, stay to Tristan?
Really quickly, I was just gonna say, when we did this, it was, the wording was more declaring the vacancy, which was really different. Than like posting the job. For people to apply to, and so maybe that advertise word is sort of. What's getting hang, hung up there, because typically you have to declare the vacancy regardless of who can or can't apply. And that's just that procedural piece, which is super different than posting. That job listing for people to apply for, and so just making sure we have that distinction, which I think what this is doing is declaring that, so again. It's not asking for applications and simply saying that this vacancy has occurred and then that, that might clear up some of that. Gray area.
Thank you, Tristan. Any comments, Bob? Or just thumbs up?
Well, I would, I would, I would agree with that, and, but I would also just. So the board understands, we're using the word advertise because that is the statutory language and we want to track the statutory language. But as far as what it means, I think that's consistent with, with what Director described.
Thank you. Without objection, we're gonna close discussion. That was really good discussion from everybody, thank you. It's been moved to author, we're going to go for a vote by objection or vote by opposition. It's been moved to authorize OSBA staff to advertise the ED executive director vacancy. On the OSBA website and work with outside legal counsel on hiring procedures, standards, criteria and policy directives. For the board to consider at future OSBA board meeting, that is open to the public and includes a public comment period. Is there any objection on this? Motion, please unmute and say nay. If you're in opposition to this vote, say nay. Is there anyone in opposition? Please unmute and say nay.
Nay.
That was Linda Hamilton, moved against this motion. Is there anyone else in opposition of this motion? See none? The motion passes with one opposition from Director Linda Hamilton. With that, I want to summarize the conversation, we have made really important decisions, this could be qualified as the most important decision a board does. Is moving forward with how to hire their executive director. We will send communication with the members to know about the update that we have. I want to really thank you all for centering OSBA's mission and the parameters that we discussed in this conversation. Was very productive conversation, and seen there is no further discussion once of the board. The board now is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here and for putting the time.